Right there. They're looking for you, bro.
You want Trump?
(laughing)
(inaudible)
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 (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Oh Julie Menon is right there, bro. Julie Menon. Right there, our next speaker. So-called speaker. So, next speaker, Menon. How are you doing today? How are you doing today, Julie Menon? Next speaker, Menon. What's about next speaker?
We didn't get it listed, we wanted to check the plan.
Yeah, and the thing... Yeah, and Julie, I was on...
Wait, wait, wait. Why wouldn't you get an email? Nothing. Nothing. Please, don't be censoring people. It feels like it.
Yeah, no, no, I was online. I was online, I think you left. I was online. I was legitimately online, it's on record, like... And I submitted it. Well, you gonna be our next speaker, so I mean, I hope you fix that. Thank you. That's Julie Menon. She's the chair of Consumer Work Protection. The chair of Consumer Work Protection. Yeah, you're doing good, man. Doing well, man. Say to you, bro. Say to you, bro. So you leaving, bro? Yo, you leaving? There's another hearing about the federal cuts. There's another hearing about the federal... There's another hearing about the federal cuts at 1 o'clock. Yeah, 1 o'clock, the federal hearings, a cut about the federal... So this is about the federal cuts. Yeah, I got you.
We demand that you develop a plan to minimize the harm our communities are about to experience. Trump and these billionaires don't care if New Yorkers starve, get sick, or lose their homes. This vast majority of New Yorkers depend on Medicare, Medicare, housing assistance, and SNAP, just to survive. If we lose these essential services, we will lose the New Yorkers to preventable death. I want to say that again. (inaudible)
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 Now we want to develop a plan to save, and fix this, now we can help people have a right to more, and ensure global health.
Right, right.
The power speakers are New York, New Yorkers, citizens that register from the program. People who have lives on SNAP, which was listed, Medicare, Medicare, and control of this right state of housing, and to maintain their health. I want everyone to know that we all have something to do if these federal budget cuts go through. And we all matter.
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 Oh. So, by the way... They let them cover they radio all they want. So, by the way, over here... Over here... You have the fucking pedophile, right here. You have this pedo, right here. Looked like they didn't allow him to be on the steps because they knew that people would pick it up. So you have the known pedophile right there in the blue jacket. What's up, Douglas? What's up, pedophile? What's up, pedo? So that's over there. Yeah, so... They banned him from the steps. (laughing)
Oh, Samu Meri, Samu Meri, oh, yeah. Excellent. Oye, pero me gustó como ellos fueron juntos. Le metió ahí, le dijo, nosotros no apoyamos.
Like they allowed him on the steps? Because they didn't want nobody to pick that shit up.
Él le dijo, ¿quiénes son los dueños de Flow? Flow ni siquiera del estado, una compañía privada. Es lo único, y son lo único que son dijes, dijes, dije público, y lo están cobrando, mira. Mira.
That's it. No le detuvieron.
No, pero eso era algo también que estaba diciendo que... Ah, eso sí.
El tío sí está encargado, hay un viaje.
Requirement for ID, full address, and constant certification. These rules are designed to push people off the very programs that keep them alive and give them a chance to regain stability. The programs that help me regain my stability. The help is not...
El carro se echó, el tal y le van a hacer. Está ahí. Eso es tarjeta.
Mira, ahora mismo.
Eso de...
Ahora mismo, ese estudio.
De poner, de poner dos choferes en el comité. Eso de la...
Ah, claro, eso es...
Eso viene, ella lo sabe, ella lo sabe. Yo hablé, yo hablé con, con el polis y... Ella, ella una carrosa, lo que ella... Ella, ella...
How many decades have we not been staying here? We've been saying this ad nauseam.
Way too long.
It's time, and it's been time, because this is not just food, it's deadly. Now, here's what...
I mean, it's a car, it's not a baby.
Over there. Yeah, that fat fuck... Little fat fuck is walking over. He, I think he saw me, the guy in the blue suit. Little blue, blue dress shirt, Douglas Powell. Yeah, little piece of shit, little piece of shit. Piece of shit, little pedophile, who is protected by the city council, especially chair nurse. It's fucking disgusting. It's really disgusting, reason, I cannot go crazy at this, I can't go crazy at this, um, or say I really wanna stay here because they, they'll kick you out the city council steps. And that's how these fuckers are. And I know everybody's, everybody's fucking watch list. So I gotta be careful of how I fucking conduct myself. I'm not like other people that go... That could, that go smack cameras and all that stupid shit and get away with it.
Pero, 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 pero. No, 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 pero, pero, pero. Tú sabes que yo, yo, Fernando Mateo, yo...
(inaudible)
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 You can't. That's why you're not a speaker. It is not a crime, to be sure. It is not a crime to be over. We call on city leaders to stand for us, invest in care and not death, choose compassion over indifference, and send the dignity and help of all New Yorkers.
Right.
Together, we ask our partners in the city council to help us in your... (inaudible) No. (inaudible) 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 (laughing)
El otro día salió, y arma por la televisión todavía por ahí.
Sí, pero, sí, pero.
Mira cuál es.
Sí, la razón.
Ah, pero, pero, pero. Y tiene que esperar a todo esto, y no tiene para lo loco. Ya lo acabas. Va a ver a la gente que comienza. Van a decir, mira lo hay, mirando cámara. Él que como quiere, él le... Raul, Raul. Lo que dicen de ti, el que no te conoce, nosotros... Mira, pero, 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 por ejemplo. Mira, el que no te conoce, nosotros que te conocemos. Mira cómo estamos contigo, habla. Pero hay un reguero de gente que no te conoce, lo que le dice, es un loco, es un tipo, un que se yo que.
Ah, pero hay que, eh, vuelvo y te critico. El que también sin conocer, lo toma como verdad. Es una gente que va a analizar, no te pongan esa cosa un loco, tema de Mateo. Mateo tiene mucha vaina más que ganar, que nosotros perder. Mira, tomo eso una por... Ahora mismo, nosotros que estamos acá, estamos dando, ahí, ponemos Mateo, veis. Yo quiero hablar, hablar, ese que coge la vaina, no olvides, tenemos esta vaina, vamos a hacerla, verdad, sí, vamos a hacerla. Ahí tenemos cámara, tenemos prensa, tenemos alcanza.
Tú vaya más de derecha.
Tenemos, pues, la... (inaudible) 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 Ahí, a ver, ahí se echa la...
No estamos, pero, pero, nosotros hacemos presión, pero ya dentro, que está lo que... Apuesto a que digo eso.
Van a caer la piedra, si me sale bien. Mira, cuento tu parecido, esta piedra no me...
Yo no te echo la piedra, es, es, es dando la oportunidad.
Es una manera de decir. Vamos a coger la piedra que nos conviene, en vez del hueco. Señor. Vamos, por ahí, a ver lo que me digo.
Un placer, acuérdate que, yo siempre te dije que nosotros te necesitamos. Ahora no te necesitamos haciendo...
Dame cuenta, dame cuenta.
No, lío con nosotros, le puede salir un paya. Ya lo sabes.
Tú sabes, para que pirata le hace daño, no, no, no.
Yo apoyo, a ese tacita.
Que era tacita, ahí, malamente. No, 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 no. Pero, pero, por mi justicia.
A TDC.
Que por mi justicia, TDC, porque...
Esa 33 mil placa para que se la dé. Tu compañero, que tiene 25, 30... Tú sabes la demanda. ¿Qué pasó? 140 millones.
Sí, pero, eso no paría bien.
Eso va ayudar a ese chupado.
Y yo incluido también.
Tú no puedes estar ahí, que tienes tu misión.
No.
Eso, eso fue lo que te interesa.
No, no, no. 140 millones.
240 millones de dólares, eso fue...
Para lo que tuvimos que hacer eso. Dale, dale, que tengo... Tú tienes que llegar y tú vas.
Pamo, pamo.
Eh, Raul. Mira, mira, mira. Estamos aprovechando.
Yo sé, yo sé, yo sé, yo tengo el teléfono.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Mira, te sonrón, sonrón.
Yeah. So, we're here right now, uh... That was Raul talking to somebody from the... Vent- 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 Morning, real Vent- Vent- Morning, but... Haze off. See, I'm studying our seats right there.
We must protect social security. We must protect now. How you tell a family that sending their children to school, they don't have no food? We cannot afford to do that in New York City. This is New York City, like at first, the capital of the world. People are worried about New York City, we are going to... Yeah, yeah. Don't make it a matter of... Don't make it a matter of... (inaudible) 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 People are scared, they can't, how are they gonna protect us?
They don't, they don't, they don't, they don't. Don't do what you're supposed to do.
(inaudible)
Uh, this was a ventful, ventful day, but...
We cannot afford it right now. It's in the city council. We're forced to do so. The city council...
Oh, Julie Wan's, uh... Beautiful ass coming back. (laughing) Julie Wan, beautiful ass. That's... One more.
It's not an opinion. How is it that we're right? And that we're... Look. I win. We win. Thank you.
Yeah, I got a...
I'm yourself, okay, if they be your... But I don't wanna be the answer. I'm just... Woo!
Except they combine, like I say, alright, I'm not here to disrupt, because they got a hearing about federal cuts, and, um, nothing to do today. Nothing to do today, so... Yeah. Oh, me? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not having you yelling and screaming at me.
I know.
I love you too much.
I know, I love you, I know, I'm not doing that. That's not me. (laughing) I know. Hey, what's up, Julie? How you doing? Alright, see you inside too, take care. So that's the council member of the... 26 districts, Sunnyside. So... Fucking hilarious.
Federal funding for what?
From Trump funding.
He, he, Trump is cutting the funding?
Yeah, so they told me...
For what, funding for what?
Everything.
Oh, that's great.
I mean...
Stopping the bleeding.
Yeah.
The taxpayer money.
Cold.
Thank you, Donald Trump. Thank you, Doge, for uncovering this crap where New York City is fleecing the taxpayers.
Yeah.
(inaudible) God bless, uh, Charlie Kirk, rest in peace.
Anyway.
That's it, we're getting better and better. Of billionaires who already have private jets, who already have the finance, the financials, and our whole, the, 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 and safety, and help, and build our family. And we are saying, y'all, watch out. This goes to our people. We are saying that we will not steal, or we will cut. Right?
Right.
And it's President Trump.
Trump, yes, we love Trump. Yeah. We love him, we love Trump, yeah. We love Trump. I'm sorry, she said Trump, I got worked up.
Yeah! We win.
I know, but she said Trump.
We win. We win. We win.
I want to see everything.
I got eight years of tenure.
I got you, man, I just want to be, you know, be with you.
Be my son, you know, and don't...
Woo! Trump's a warrior. We win. 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 So, with that, honorary, Jessica, Alvin, and that's off.
Really good.
Ah! So, hello.
Oh, look at that.
Thank you so much for being here.
One more one's a run supporter.
The important thing is, we are fighting together, right? Yeah. Right. So, I'm elect, I'm elect, I'm the council member representing District 30, and the chair of the Immigration Committee at the New York City Council. And I am so proud always to stand in solidarity with all these beautiful people here, and to send a message to Trump and his band of babies. We do not agree with any of your supposed policies. We do not agree...
You are a communist. You are a communist. That's what you are.
We are a communist. We're a...
When we fight.
We win.
When we fight.
We win.
When we fight.
We win.
When we fight.
We win. We win.
You're sexist. Trump. Trump. We want Trump. We want Trump. USA. USA. We want Trump. Trump. He's a candidate. Me too. I didn't disrupt this shit. I did not dis... (laughing) Alright. Alright, me too. (laughing) I did not disrupt. (laughing) I didn't disrupt anything. I didn't disrupt, man. I did not disrupt, it's on camera, man. (laughing)
I'm glad everything's on camera.
I didn't disrupt, man, like, I didn't disrupt shit.
That every vocal and everything is on camera.
I didn't disrupt. (laughing)
When you guys done?
I didn't disrupt anything, man.
It's a lawful assembly.
I didn't disrupt, man. I didn't disrupt any disruptive, it's on camera, bro, like... How am I gonna get kicked out for something I didn't do?
You were rehearsing.
But I did not, man.
We have cameras up there, too, we got everything.
(laughing) Alright. Gotta take a L. (laughing)
Take it off for the day.
Alright, man.
Camera's there, too.